There. Freaking back.
Uh, I got Sunday. I don't know when. When I was younger, it used to be easier coming back.
Never done well.
I, I think you've got adrenaline and you get there and you just, you go and, and, and come back. It's yeah, it's a, it's zombie. I'm, I'm bad. I'm dragging. I'm dragging. Yeah. I had one, one night. It was like, and I'm like, eh, I'm gonna have to read the statutes. You don't want me right now. I'm gonna, and I referred him to somebody else. You know what I'm talking about? Um.
I put it down.
Is it somebody? I'm just like, yeah, this is kind of time sensitive and I, I can't. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was one of those. I'm just like, I, I think when you hear this ASAP and you don't want me for at least a week. I don't want to be outside of whatever, but, but yeah, it was a good. Have you ever been over there? I thought it was gonna be third world. It was not. It's a, uh, more than I go Morocco.
Yeah, it's nice. They're in nice beach.
Yeah. We went to the beach and we.
Can't afford that. I mean, I didn't take the bar. So I didn't, I gotta go take the bar. So I can't afford that kind of stuff.
Hey, I got, you know, uh, you started service over there. So I got. Like five. Yeah. And so sure. Going unless. And then, uh, you know, it's, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm, the whole family was eating for like, see happens. I mean, I'm talking about lamb and. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Dysentery or anything down there.
Well, that's, I really thought that was gonna get I, I, I literally thought it was gonna be the more.
Have you, have you had that first movement?
No, I, I thought it was gonna be like that, but I was just gonna eat for sustenance, but no, that's. Really good. So it was a good time.
The resume we went to, uh, Lebanese restaurant. We got breakfast. We had Lebanese breakfast one morning. Oh my gosh. Lebanonese food is fantastic. Freaking awesome.
You know, my, my wife has some lemonies.
Everybody's like, oh man. So like you gotta. All right. I guess.
You were, you were. Yeah. You're a cowboy for a week, aren't you? Yeah. Good weather there too.
Here it was.
I heard it was. Shut them up. You know, the cream thing is we went out to the desert and I'd expect it. It never got cold. It's half my.
They like your ease.
Do they? We're gonna use it.
I didn't like too much until they said good.
All right. That's not, I didn't say it, but.
Get you an extra season.
Perfect. All right.
Congratulations in order, is it? But the clients also.
But I see why.
Three dollar too. Nevermind.
Timber Road and all that. I says that.
What tradition is that?
So you have to leave.
Yes.
Balance.
I was wondering why no one would sit on that.
Yeah.
So I looked at, cause that's not centered. I was like, what the hell? Josephine. Don't bring Joey a code red. We ready that code red the next day. Stayed awake for three days.
It, it's, it's recorded. She got it on music.
Look at that, huh? You get that from Mr. Sam himself or? Mr. Sam, what are you talking about?
Go ahead and get started this evening. With the, uh, city of Centerton planning commission meeting for November fourth, two thousand twenty-five with a roll call.
Jeff Seifert. Joey Engel. Tony Davis. Craig Langford. Ben Lewis. Devin Murphy. Curtis Ramsey. John Sessoms. Brandon Twaboda.
First thing on the agenda. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our meeting from ten twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
John, a motion approved minutes from ten twenty-one twenty-five.
Motion in a second. Is there anyone opposed? All right. Next is the ratification of the admin approvals. Looks like there's four. Uh, looks like an MSI for Langham and Estates, uh, winery, which converted the site from retail to alcohol. MSI, uh, twenty-five zero one for the Latter Day Saints, uh, modular building, which is temporary. Uh, track split for the Ramirez property line adjustment and track split for, uh, Reach Church, which is a lot combination. Any questions, comments from staff or the commissioners on the admin approvals? If not, then I would entertain a motion to, for the admin approvals.
Craig, I'll make a motion to approve the ratification of, of approved.
Motion in a second. Is anyone opposed? Our new business this evening, we do have two public hearings. Uh, the first public hearing is conditional use twenty-five zero seven, the Centerton Food Truck Park. Park, and this is in addition to an existing additional use, which is twenty-one zero eight. You guys will give us a quick overview of what you're requesting.
Good evening. Um, I'm Jake Chavis, Thought to See Engineering. Um, this is the property owner, um, here next to me. Um, we're just kind of, uh, questing and, and expansion, um, of that, that phase one. Um, you can see we've got, yep, we've got that site plan pulled up. Um, we're requesting an additional. Two, three, four, five, five, um, five trucks, uh, with associated parking drives, dumpster area, um, and also a, that are awning. We anticipate that it'll make the area, um, look, look, look nice. And I'm gonna bring questions as well as the property owner.
Okay. Kayla?
Yes. So this parcel is located along West Centerton Boulevard, directly east of Harps, most notably. The applicant is proposing an expansion to their existing food truck court to include the addition of five food trucks. Parking, a large metal canopy, an ice machine, a walk-in cooler seating in a playground area. Per title fourteen, mobile food trucks are conditional in C two zoning. And this property has an existing conditional use permit, which allowed for six food trucks, which was approved in twenty twenty-one. Um, so the proposed zoning is C two, which is highway commercial, which is intended for businesses which cater to highway traffic, such as service station, dining restaurants, motels, supermarkets, and similar businesses. Those minimum setbacks are in your packet for you. To the east is Centerton Self-Storage, which is zone C two. To the south is the Township West Subdivision, which is zoned R two. To the southwest is the Cent- Centerton Municipal Complex, which is zoned C one. And to the west, as I said before, is Hart, zone B two. So their proposed additions for this conditional use are three, sixteen food trucks and two seven by fourteen food trucks. Um, so for your guys' consideration is with the addition of five food trucks, there will be a total of eleven food trucks on site. Um, just as a note, additional items being proposed with the large scale development plans. A ten by ten walk-in cooler to be installed on the existing trash pad. And as far as I understand, it'll be inside the existing trash enclosure. Um, an ice machine and vending machines, a metal canopy, playground, and fifteen picnic tables. The eastern three fourths of the property is located in a flood plain and a small section near the eastern property line is located in a floodway. A flood permit has been applied for and is pending approval. There are no known wetlands on this property. Um, per the National Wetlands Inventory Mapper. This property is served by Centerton Water and Sewer, and the property is coordinating with RDOT and Centerton Utilities for the upcoming utility relocation to widen, uh, Highway one oh two. Currently, a twenty-foot easement is being proposed along the east property line to account for the relocation of the water main for one oh two. Uh, this property is located along Westernerton Boulevard, which is a major arterial with a right of way of a hundred feet. A right of way has been required by RDOT for the widening of one oh two. And then with the large scale development, the property owner will provide a fee in lieu for the sidewalk. Um, for access, there's one planned access off of one oh two to align with Center Point Drive. For parking, the applicant is proposing a parking ratio of three parking spaces. Per food truck with eleven food trucks, that's thirty-three spaces. With their current site plan, they actually have thirty-six spaces. Um, the parking addition will be paved, but the existing area is proposed to be left as gravel. So with this addition, all of the parking will be paved, but the area between the lines of food trucks where all the seating in the playground is will continue to be gravel. Um, so that's for your guys' consideration, the parking ratio, and if that area of the site that exists can remain gravel. For outdoor storage, the applicant proposes to just maintain their previously approved outdoor storage behind the original six food trucks. No additional outside storage is proposed for the new food trucks, except for the addition of the walk-in cooler, which is inside the existing dumpster enclosure, and then they're relocating a dumpster to a different place on the site that Diane is pointing out. Um, the term of approval is proposed to be permanent, given the nature of the business. And then for hours of operation, they're not changing. Um, it's between, it's Sunday through Saturday, six AM to ten PM with individual food trucks, hour, hours varying per truck. And then for landscaping, the applicant is proposing six trees located within the landscaped parking lot islands and a continuous shrub buffer along the northeast and south property lines. Trees are also proposed along Centerton Boulevard with this specific species and locations to be approved by Centerton Utilities, since there is an existing sewer line there and utility easements galore. Happy to answer any questions.
You said, what was the current parking ratio?
It's three per truck.
No, like the current, did I say they have?
That's how much they have now. Like, that was what, that's the ratio that was originally approved was three per truck.
Three per truck included employee parking?
That's including for employees, three total.
How many square feet is a?
So there's two sizes, the eight by sixteen and the seven by fourteen are the two sizes of the trucks that they're. Proposing.
One twenty-eight. The other one?
Seven by fourteen, so ninety-eight.
Have we had any parking complaints, any issues with pre-existing? And is this?
I think it gets busy for sure, but I need complaints or anything.
Help me remember again the gravel part that we're referring to here.
Already there.
That, that's what's already there. And what's on, on the gravel right now?
That's currently a parking.
If you, if Brandon, if you look at where they're parking now, they want to put trucks where you're parking now and move that parking lot down the hill, right? Where it's open parking. Kind of hard to see the existing trucks. We mix them with the rocks.
Yeah. That's the existing.
Those are the existing row of trucks and then.
Now they're gonna add.
Add five more, the other side of the gravel. Looks like facing in.
Why aren't we paving the whole thing?
We're, we are proposing to pave the drive out. What will not be paved is the existing, where the current food trucks are and under the. Really where, where the current food trucks are, yeah.
It's where people walk.
This is for like the, where the vendors, the, the owners of the trucks will be walking pretty much the back of.
Okay.
There's no really customer walking through that.
I got you.
With the existence or with the, uh, addition of vending machines? Are you, are you gonna have a, a vendor's truck coming in there and, and loading that up? Is there room to maneuver a truck like that in that parking?
So a, a, as far as, um, maneuverability goes, we do, and Kayla, I don't know if we have this with the CUP. We do have a truck turning model, um. In our, in our large scale that, that shows a truck being able to, to kind of get in and, in and out of there. The, the main purpose of the turning model is to show, um, how trucks, new trucks, one through five are able to, to back in, kind of get out with relative ease. Um, but we do anticipate truck number, you can see that, that number eight right there probably, um, having to squeeze in there and be a little tight.
You're talking about.
I think he was more talking about supply like Coke and Pepsi for those vending machines. A, a larger vendor to, to stock those, getting an eighteen-wheeler in there or not related, a, a, a delivery truck.
So our, our model was with a truck and a trailer. I would think that if a truck and a trailer can get in there, a Pepsi van may be able to get in there without, without any issues. Um, but I, you know who would be actually stocking a vending machine? I don't anticipate it being a.
Yeah. So right now, we don't, yeah, we don't, we don't get any eighteen-wheelers because food trucks typically don't purchase big amounts like a restaurant. Uh, and they don't, they don't, I mean, we had some vendors coming in suppliers, uh, but they want involved items. Uh, so all the vendors right now that in agree were from one vendor, so typically they purchase from Sam, from Walmart. They don't, they don't get any big. Company delivered to them.
And that, that cooler is shared by all the vendors? That walking, walking.
Yeah, the walking cooler does, does one of the, um, things that they have shared with me, that they don't have enough space, uh. Like their vegetables and anything like that, like bulky stuff that they get. So they're gonna be sharing the cooler. And I'm gonna put some cars and some locks, so everybody have their items there.
Is your truck route not going through a food truck?
That's a, that's an old one. Um, we, we submitted a new one. But that was one of the difficulties that we had. Uh, and that's why I kind of mentioned that.
I got you.
We were able to make it not go through there, but we changed this curve into a rolled curve. So that way the truck. It's now so written, it, it solved the problem.
Good with fire on, is that supposed to be a hammerhead with the maulage? I know your drive aisles are eighteen feet and twenty feet, which. Okay. And is fire okay with?
Giant hammerhead.
Is that what I, yeah.
We just, for simplicity in this, this stack, that's why the, it's so wide right there. Take triangles for the hammerhead.
I'll go for the newest one.
Any other questions or comments while Diana's searching?
Is this gonna be a separate conditional use permit? Are you agreeing with my question? Are you saying, yeah, it is?
It's a new one.
Okay. And it's gonna run.
The first one would still exist if I, if I remember the dialogue. The first one would still exist and then this would be, um, in addition to, according to what we have.
I mean, I feel like you guys would super see the old one.
Yeah, would this supersede the old one and, and cover?
So much is being added and moved around.
Because this one.
It's an expansion of the existing one, but I think additional use purposes is probably supersedes.
We had a few issues with the first one, the plan, and then some changes that happened that, you know, like doing a lot of gravel instead of keeping some green spaces and. The trailer that has the extra deck on the back, which is, that's still.
Were you stuck? Oh, by, so actually that trailer, um, attachments are part of the trailer. He sent me the pictures. I can send the, the pictures of us.
Those, I mean, those also might be more concerns for when we bring the large scale development through.
Those things the planning commission put. Well, at this time.
Does anything in here conflict with the original? CUP.
See the head from the drawing.
Not conflict per se, just like updating. So like the, the original one was only six food trucks. So now this is eleven.
And work, is there a lighting? I saw there's only two poles or something?
Yeah, the, the photometrics and the lighting, that's more of a large scale. Concern, but they do have two new lighting, two new light poles in their, um, landscaped parking lot islands to provide light for the parking lot. And then there are lights on the canopy as well.
Lights on the canopy, two lights in the parking lot.
But we're just looking at the use, right? Only thing, we're not looking at large scale. We're just looking at the use was approved for six. You're asking for eleven. That's it.
I'm gonna go ahead and open up to the public, so, um, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
It's John, a motion to open a public hearing for conditional use twenty-five zero seven.
Motion in a second. Is anyone opposed? We are now open to the public. If anyone wishes to speak, have any questions, comments, concerns in regards to, uh, conditional twenty, conditional use twenty-five zero seven? For the, uh, Centerton, uh, food truck park. Um, we'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name, address, and any questions or comments that you might have. Second call for anyone that wishes to speak. And third and final call.
Joey, I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second, is any? Any other questions or comments in regards to the request of conditional use? If not, then I would entertain a motion, um, for, um, the condition use for the Centerton Food Truck Park.
Just tell me you're making motion to approve the conditional use twenty-five oh seven for the Cent- Centerton Food Truck Park.
Second.
Motion in a second, if you'll do a roll call for me, please.
Yes.
Ben Lewis. Evan Murphy.
Yes.
Curtis Ramsey.
Yes.
Craig Langford.
Yes.
Tony Davis. John Sessoms.
Yes.
Brandon Twaboda.
Yes.
Jeff Seifert.
I'll be yes as well.
We need language to proceed. Uh, the other one, boys.
And, and I think that may be better for enforcement purposes rather than trying to figure out which.
So yeah, can we add, I guess, Tony, you're okay if we add language.
The other ones.
Plan.
The supersede.
We just add that to the staff notes and then put it in there. Yeah, supersede, so.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Right. Next on the agenda is also a public hearing. This is for conditional use twenty-five eighteen, Stucky, uh, short-term rental. Uh, the notes also say it'll be used for, potentially used for medium and, and long-term rental. The notes off will say it'll be used for, potentially used for medium and and long term rental. At nine twenty one reading railroad lane. Uh it is zoned, uh well, it's not listed on here, um but slot three twenty. Of the Featherstone Village, uh phase two. It's the applicant here to give us an overview of what you're requesting.
It's actually gonna be expected of me. Uh but I'm Sam Stucky, I'm the homeowner. Yeah, we've got family that live in Canada, we saw this deal show up, uh they come down and visit us regularly. Usually three to four months out of the year. Um and whether or not here, we would like help plan the mortgage. That's why we did this.
Okay. Diane, would you like us, like to walk us through the staff comments, please?
Yes, um this is for a short term rental. Um it is nine twenty one reading railroad lane, it's lot three twenty of Featherstone Village Phase Two. It's point zero seven acres. And as Mr. Stucky mentioned, they want to use it as short term rental when their family is not visiting from out of state, out of the country. Um the home is two bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and can sleep up to. Five people, it is zoned R three single family, um it does also have a P U D nineteen O two. That has a, that reduced the minimum lot area to two thousand eight hundred square feet and minimum lot width of thirty five feet. Um surrounding uses are all within Featherstone Village Phase One and Two and the north, south, east and west, and that's all the R three. Single family and the adjacent property to the east of Featherstone Village is zoned R four multifamily. For the future dunes at Prairie Valley and the property directly to the south of this particular lot is zoned A one. Um the property is accessed, of course, from Kibble Road and or Womack. All streets in Featherstone Village are private streets with no sidewalks. But there are pedestrian trails within the subdivision behind the homes, not this particular home, as they back up to um a separate property. It is connected to Centerton Water and Sanitary Sewer. There are two off street parking spaces that are provided in the home and their driveways. And there are areas for guest parking within the subdivision, and in fact, this one has. A whole bunch of on street parking just to the north of Brady Railroad, everything on the north is. Um on straight parking there, but other than that, there's, as long as there are the guest parking spaces, I know there are on straight parking. Um so sorry, will be managed by the property owners. And covenants for Featherstone Village do not prohibit leasing or renting properties within the subdivision. They are asking for in a diff- indefinite period of time for the approval of the short term rental. Um and no time shall they have more than five people. Um by our extinguisher, we do recommend especially for the short term rental. ADA accessibility is encouraged, um but it is on the homeowner for the compliance. And um like I said, they would like this for an indefinite period of time, but that's for you guys to decide.
What was the period of time for the other ones?
Indefinite.
You're in Madison couple more.
Couple months, yeah, right, right.
One last week or the last.
The previous meeting, yeah.
Well, we're about to move laws in a couple months.
Did meet all the certified mailing, they didn't have to do a sort of, brain rewind. Uh they did meet all the certified mailing and public hearing requirements, and we have not received anything in our office for any comments.
Any other questions or comments before we open it up to the public? Uh I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Mr. Greg, uh motion to open public hearing, C U twenty five eighteen.
Motion in a second to open a public hearing, is there anyone that's opposed? All right, we aren't open to the public, if anyone wishes to speak. Have any questions, comments in regards to the conditional use uh twenty five eighteen for short term rental. At nine twenty one reading railroad lane, then we'd ask that you come to the podium. State your name and address and any, any questions, comments you might have. Second call for anyone that wishes to speak. And third and final call.
John, a motion opposed, close call, C U twenty five eighteen. Second.
Motion in a second, is anyone opposed? This is pretty consistent with what we've done in the past, including in this neighborhood, I believe. Uh you know, with the understanding, of course, if there's complaints or anything else, then of course we would revisit um the conditional use. Are there any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
If this gets sold, does it transition to a new owner the same? What'd you say?
Yeah, that's with the property.
It runs with the land, so it doesn't matter, uh which means. Yeah, it doesn't, ownership doesn't matter.
Should it?
Well, in, in January, law doesn't matter.
Well, I mean. Should we say that this is approved condition upon this ownership? Well, in January, it doesn't matter.
No, that's for accessory dwelling, it is not short.
I don't think so.
It's not, as of right now, no.
I have a problem with this, I'm just. When it transfers ownership, should it come back in front of us to, for them?
New owners would still have to meet the conditions that with this conditional use.
Not typically, because you wouldn't set conditions for one person that you wouldn't set for another.
Right. Unless we changed.
I mean, there are.
Then we, then it would apply to all of the conditions that are out there, not just.
I just wasn't sure if like one needed to be specific to that.
If somebody else purchases it and they wanna use it for just their home. And it's not used as a short term rental for over a year, then conditional use expires.
But there's nothing preventing like Lindsay or somebody from buying all of them.
There are no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion for conditional use twenty five eighteen. Uh this Stucky short term rental.
One question, was one of the requirements, is that it be limited up to five people?
It's in there, it, the language is in there for the maximum number that's allowed.
Well, it says per fire code, so.
Is the five always the same as the fire code?
It said five.
It says five, but what is the fire?
It says fire, it says five, and then on special conditions, it has number of occupants.
Is there a fire code for number of people that live in a.
It's just clarifying.
They took it out of the fire code, so I have no. Five it is. All right, everybody give him a five?
That's four.
How do we calculate that?
That's just what was on.
Of oxygen, so.
That was on the bus.
I think that's, I mean, I'm asking.
Yep, sorry.
We, we've got four kids, so if God forbid, we ever had no standard. That'd be six of them.
So it would be your own home.
Yeah.
What that prevents is you're renting it to like.
Well, they could do that for a long term.
That's a frat house, not a.
The wife sleeps in the tent outside, one or the other.
Yeah, whatever.
Pick a cat.
Oh, somebody gotta stay, I gotta sleep on the floor.
All right, so now I would entertain a motion. We didn't make a motion on this yet, do we, sorry? Yep, so now I would entertain a motion for conditional use twenty five eighteen.
That's John, a motion to approve conditional use twenty five eighteen, as described.
Joey, a second.
Motion in a second, if you do a real call for me, please.
Tony Davis. Brandon Swaboda.
Yes.
Craig Langford.
Yes.
Curtis Ramsey.
Yes.
John Sessoms.
Yes.
Devin Murphy.
Yes.
Joey Engel.
Yes.
Ben Lewis. Jeff Seifarth.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you, good luck. All right, next on the agenda is development twenty four zero two. Uh Calico, 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 however you say, mixed use, preliminary plans and adjacent street agreement. Commercial and apartments development, it's a highway one O two and Womack Road. It is zoned uh C two with two hundred fifty six dwellings. Um and seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet of commercial space. Uh with P U D twenty three zero five. It's the applicant here to give us some overview.
Good evening, my name is James Dibble, I'm here with McCrone Consulting Engineers on behalf of the developer. This project has been part of the city before, beneath the P U D and. We and our developer have spent quite a bit of time talking, not just with city staff, but being in front of you guys. And working through this project, and we're finally at that culmination of being able to present to you guys. Our large scale and our final product. As part of this project, per the P U D, we're providing four hundred parking stalls to go with this apartment complex. Uh over, I believe, ten different buildings, one of them. At the intersection of Womack and one O two, will have a comp- commercial component as part of it. With a clubhouse, a pool, and typical amenities that you see in apartment complexes. And I will be available for any questions to answer that the commissioners might have.
Thank you. Hey, love.
Yeah, so like he said, they are requesting approval of preliminary plans to develop a mixed use multifamily and commercial development. At the southwest corner of Womack Road and one O two. The development will include two hundred and fifty six residential units and seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet of commercial space. Which is seven multifamily buildings and then two buildings that contain both multifamily and commercial, and then there's one amenity slash leasing office. Or ten buildings total, if you don't count the like pool building that they're servicing the pool. Uh the commercial will be located on the ground floors of building one and four, which are at the corners of the front of the development adjacent to one O two. The property has access to Centerton Water along one O two and Centerton Sewer along Womack. There are no FEMA that have been flood planes on the parcel and there are no wetlands indicated on the National Wetland Inventory Mapper. Uh just to familiarize where it's at, it's north, to the north is Ace Hardware, which is zone C two. Walgreens, which is also zone C two, and then to the east is Centerton. Mini storage and to the south is Willow Ridge subdivision. To the west is the Sherwin Williams and the Centered Retail Center, which are also zone C two. This property does have an approved P U D, which was approved by the planning commission on February sixth of twenty twenty four. For their P U D requirements, there are a few things that I pulled up to the top, um their area. And ownership, the condition was that that has to be owned by one person. It's still owned by K E P Centerton LLC and no division of land is proposed with this development. For the density, they were limited to no more than twenty eight point five units per acre or two hundred and fifty six residential units. And they were required to include a minimum of seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet of commercial space, which they did not change from the P U D. For the open space, they, no less than thirty seven point five percent of the development. Had to be preserved as common usable open space, from the open space easement. Um so per that P U D requirement, they had to have three point three six three acres, and right now they're proposing four point one seven acres. Um and they did follow the requirement that if it was within an easement, it could only count towards so much of their open space. Um there's an exhibit on the overall site plan as well. For the amenities, the P U D required that they include a poolhouse facility, pool area, fountain. Grill and gathering spaces, fire pits, event spaces, public pickleball courts, courtyards and walking trails, as was shown on the approved concept. Or other amenities list uh approved by staff. All the amenities that were originally shown with the P U D are included with the L S D plans. For the utilities, as I said before, it's served by Centerton Water and Sewer. Um Centerton U- Centerton Utilities does have a few outstanding comments, but approved the project to come to you, come before you guys for approval. And they asked that there be a contingency, that all outstanding comments be addressed before the project is released for construction. For the drainage, um this project has been viewed for compliance with the Centerton Drainage Manual. The project will utilize two underground storage tanks that will. To the existing storm sewer network along highway one O two. Additional catch patients are proposed along Womack to maintain access. On the collector, there are no changes to one O two itself, Alan is so happy to answer any questions, he wants to know drainage. For the adjacent street agreement. Um it's along Centerton Boulevard and Womack, Womack is a major collector with a planned right of way of eighty feet. And Centerton Boulevard is a major arterial with a planned right of way of a hundred feet. The development will have one access off Centerton Boulevard and two accesses off of Womack, that is a change from the P U D design. We actually ended up adding that additional connection on Womack Road. Um on the south property, cause there was no reason not to. Um and then the P U D required that we explore the ability to connect with Sherwin Williams, but due to the existing grades. That cross access was not possible. So all of the right of way along Centerton Boulevard was previously dedicated. This development will expand the existing sidewalk to ten feet to match the master street and road section. Streetlights will be added at the entrance and every three hundred feet. No street trees are provided along Centerton Boulevard due to R D O C clear zones and existing utilities, however, there are shrubs. Uh provided along the property outside of the right of way. On Womack, forty feet of right of way will be dedicated to meet the master street plan and improvements will include fifteen. Feet of street widening, curb and gutter, streetlights at entrances and every three hundred feet and a ten foot trail. Um at the intersection of Centerton Boulevard and Womack, it was um discussed with the P U D approval. Developer um provide an equ- an equitable amount of fee and lieu to contribute towards the construction of a signal. At this intersection, the developer will provide thirty three percent of the construction cost. Which was provided, that estimate was provided by the Public Works Director. Um and that amount is in your packet, if I read it out loud, I'll mess it up. Um which is to be paid fifty percent at the time of building permit issuance and then fifty percent at the time of C of O. That payment scheduled was approved by the Public Works Director. And the cost of engineering for the signal was not included in the estimate because the city has received a grant to cover the cost of that work. For parking, four hundred spaces were required and four hundred faces are provided. Um that ratio that was previously approved with the P U D is in your packet for you, but. The long and short of it all is that they provided the amount as required. For the trash enclosure and for the trash compactor, the site proposes one trash compactor on the southwest side of the site. And then one trash compactor within building one, the trash compactor outside is proposed to have a brick enclosure. With a composite deck board gate, and since that's not. A material that we see too often, they did provide a picture for you guys. Um the code requirement is that it's an opaque material, normally we see metal, but they proposed that, and it seemed durable enough. Uh for landscaping and screening, trees and shrubs are provided throughout the site, including within parking lot landscaped islands. As required by the P U D, a continuous screen of evergreen trees and shrubs was provided along a south property line. In addition to an eight foot, or eight foot wood privacy fence. Um for phasing, this development is proposed to be broken down into four phases. Phase one, including building one and building two. And building ten, which is the leasing office and all infrastructure. Um. And then with that first phase, ninety seven parking spaces would be available to the public. All other parking will be behind gates and construction fences. For phase two, that was building three and building four. And two hundred and eighteen parking spaces would be made available at that time, and then phase three was building five and building six and building seven. With thirty six additional spaces being made available, and then phase four with building eight and building nine. And the remaining spaces would be available at that time, cause all the construction fence then would be removed. Uh one thing we did wanna bring up about this phasing plan is that we have concerns about the amount of parking made available with phase one. Due to the number of units and commercial available with phase one, the recommended providing. We recommend providing additional parking with phase one by moving the fences to a different location. As parking should be proportional to the number of units and commercial square footage. Meaning that there should prox- be approximately a hundred eighty three spaces available with phase one, if it were equitable. Um and just as a note, there are some outstanding comments left on the plan, so we recommend that any approval be contingent on outstanding comments being addressed. Per the city engineer, there are outstanding items that will need to be updated prior to pre-con, but will need to be bid out for the project first to finalize such. Uh materials on site and testing procedures for the void percent and the stone for the underground storage area. Having questions, please let us know.
Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
You said it's recommended that there's a hundred and eighty three spaces?
Yeah, so building, the first buildings in phase one are, I think, the two four story buildings that have, I think it was like a hundred and four. Yeah, so building, the first buildings in phase one are, I think, the two four-story buildings that have, I think it was like a hundred and four. Units and fourteen thousand square feet of commercial. And so for all of that, there's only like ninety, I'd say ninety-three or ninety-seven parking spaces available. With phase one with their current fencing plan.
About half of what's written.
Not even to park all the people that they rented all the rooms.
We have no trouble with that, we were just coming up with a plan. To show what we intended to do. It really, we're kind of saying, I'm sorry, I'm Andy Smith, I'm with the owner of development. Kind of, we're never going to stop construction, phasing is kind of a, we just want to try to get some buildings open. And ahead of time, you know, ahead of others and just keep building, so. We'll have all the infrastructure down, all the site work down, and we'll just be moving through a bit sequence of buildings.
So you have the parking lot for phase two done prior to. Phase one.
So I mean, we can move the gates wherever we can update this plan to afford it.
All the issue with the grading and elevation to, to connect to Sherwin-Williams. On the, it, that doesn't, I'm trying to picture in my head, that area didn't look very.
It's deceptive, like you think it's not that steep, but you can look at it and you really see it and it's, it's pretty steep. And Alan can probably explain it better than me, but I guess.
Remember what it's at, but I think Sherwin-Williams is like four feet, five feet higher. And really what drove most of that would be fire access that exceeded fire maximum slope requirements.
I just knew we were trying to make sure that all the commercial tried to stay connected as best we could. If you were going in and out of one oh two, just to go to the next parking lot over.
You've been graded out.
Not without raising the side about four foot. And it'd be excessively and cost, it'd be excessive and cost prohibitive.
Look at the actual flow, if you tie it into one of the, the bottom road. Maybe it's just where it ties in, and I think with the north road, I'm not sure that ties it into actual Sherwin-Williams, it's been a while since we looked at it. Yes, the only way to do it would be to put it in the middle to align with the parking for the Centerson Retail. Would do, but again, to take that grade out to tie it in, you'd have to change the layout.
Change the layout and cause us to be under parked compared to the P U D requirements.
Any other questions or comments?
What was the clear space requirement from highway department?
Yeah, that was my question.
What'd you ask?
I believe it was six foot green space and then a ten-foot trail.
Is that in the highway right-of-way or is that adjacent to?
It is inside the highway right-of-way.
So I'm just thinking it'd be nice if we had some more of a screen up front, but maybe that conflicts with the commercial.
It's not so much the commercial, it's honestly all the utilities that are running in parallel with the street. Sewer and water. Basically extending into our site, it, there are easements from right-of-way to about fifty-ish foot inside of our property.
You can't plant within an easement, even if it's X number of feet away from the.
You can, but.
Well, that's.
Then if they ever have to access the utilities under there, cutting down trees and.
Oh, you're pushing the choir, but we're setting that up. We're setting that up over there on the east side with the underground electric where we also don't have some of the trees. This goes to the, the letter that M C E provided on the adjacent street. Which might need to be revised because you say that there are street trees placed one per twenty-five linear feet. Um, and that's not the case, and then the same on the, that's on both Womack and Centerson Boulevard. So I don't know if we need to revise this.
It should be for just Womack.
Yeah, it says it for both on the letter.
But that should be for just Womack.
Yeah, well, my question was, were those redistributed through on site?
Yes, those were.
Landscape plan.
So get some up front.
I think their, their islands have trees in them, most of them, the ones that don't have utility conflicts. It's just not, they're not parallel to Centerton Boulevard, same way that you would expect.
I was trying to go back and forth between the symbols and see which one of these were trees and which weren't. I guess is, my concern would be as long as we've accounted for those trees that we've. And tried to place them up front between the right-of-way and the, and the as much as possible, that would satisfy. My perspective.
We have, we moved every one that would not fit, that would not also fit into any parking island. We put those throughout the sites, that way we still met the total number required.
Thank you, no, it looks really good. Be cool developments.
I know this may be an R dot problem more than anything, but the north site entry. Does it line up? See anything across the way?
It does not. There's, there's nothing.
There's nothing there, right?
Correct.
And it's not super close to the ace.
It's across the street.
Ace is across the street, but there's. Trying to think off the top of my head.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, the east, I believe.
Yeah, there's a, isn't there a driveway maybe across, you know, like a gravel drive across from?
That's what I'm trying to.
And that. Eyes with that kind of gravel where they driveway, and so if someone were to use that in the future, they would. Have to do that, to align with us.
This portion of one oh two isn't going right in, right out, right?
No, no.
But eventually get the light in.
There we go, that's all I'm looking for.
Sorry, I didn't mean to zoom in, that's.
We'll for the cross connection of Sherwin-Williams, but.
Yeah, so that, that gravel.
It is a little east, okay, yeah.
This is kind, is what we aligned here.
And if we, we develop that, we'd make them use that stuff up. Alan, you're crazy, you can connect that to Sherwin-Williams pretty easy.
Looks flat from here, man.
Look at that, perfectly right there, it's flat. It's into that island and you go north side.
Yeah.
It's the utility conflict.
We didn't leave a little, we didn't leave much of a good spot to tie in.
Now it is, and I don't know if we all line up. And up in the front, that's just.
Centerson Retail came in. Eighty-four, eighteen or nineteen.
I don't know if you've driven in there, but it's not the most friendly parking lot. With the dead end and the hell of it for no reason, but anyway. We digressed.
It's very awkward.
Any, any other questions or comments?
It's not your fault.
We won't blame you this time.
I appreciate the.
Now, I've done plenty of my own bad ones going.
Yeah, I've tried to get out of it, I tried to get out of that one, I'm like, what the heck, I mean, I'd. Good thing I drive a big truck, you just go over the curve and just keep going, so.
Pretty minor thing, just was gonna ask about the dumpster enclosure, the composite material. Yes.
I, with the gloss beams and some other stuff that appeared to be metal, I didn't have as much of a concern as some other things. And composite shouldn't degrade like.
That's a lot longer than the.
The closest I can describe it to would be the composite deck you can buy for like. It's up to rated for anywhere from twenty to thirty years without losing color, vibrancy, not bending, warping, breaking.
The colors in, in integrated in the material, so it's not like just a surface. And we've actually found, like when we've used metal gates before, the dumpster guy tends to tear up metal. And this doesn't tear up as bad, you know, and we.
Much easier to replace.
And we can pull one, one piece out really easily.
Okay. There are no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion for development twenty-four zero two. Which is a preliminary plans and adjacent street agreement, which we just need to make sure we get the updated.
Rex, sir.
This is Craig, I'll make a motion to approve development twenty-four zero two. Preliminary plans and adjacent street agreement to be updated.
Second.
Other staff comments.
And other staff comments.
Take it again.
Motion in a second, is there anyone that's opposed? Thank you, guys.
Looking nice. Thank you.
Y'all let her know. Right, next on the agenda is subdivision twenty-four zero three, Tuscany Phase Four Final Platte. Warranty Bonds and Covenants, this is a town view and North Main Street. It is zoned R two, twelve point three five acres. Of forty-one buildable lots, forty-one dwelling units. The applicant here to give us an overview.
Good evening, Yomar Cruz, we're so consulting Severn Darco Stil Circle. Uh, I'm here to just represent in this final plat, it should be just forty-one lots and I'm on behalf of the owner. And I'll be happy to answer any question you have.
Think Phil likes us anymore, I'm sure.
Phil had been here at least two.
Only we're kind of feeling a little hurt.
It was in another meeting today, so.
Oh, it's, I mean, it's priorities, but you study, no. Tara, do you want to give us a F overview?
This is Tuscany Phase Four Zoned R Two, which is the median density single-family residential. Um, it is forty-one single-family lots and it's three point zero one units per acre. The, um, for the final covenants have been approved, um, the drainage report we just received an update on. So it is currently under staff review, but there wasn't an issue with it coming to planning commission because we can just hold it up. Um, the final plaque getting signed. Um, and then the bond estimate amounts have also been approved. Um, the parcel is located north of Townview Road and east of North Main Street and is adjacent to Tuscany Phase Three. This is the fourth and final phase of the Tuscany subdivision and does consist of, like I said before, forty-one single-family lots. Which is lots one sixty-seven through two, through two oh five. The smallest lot size for this phase is nine thousand eight hundred and forty-eight point nine feet. All storm water for phase four is handled by the dry detention bond that was completed with phase one. And then they made adjustments in phase two and phase three, but there wasn't any additional adjustments done, phase four. Um, for this phase, no additional right-of-way was being dedicated. Thirty-five feet of right-of-way was dedicated with a track split done in, um, twenty fourteen along Townview Road. Um, I just want to note some changes from the approved plans, these are good changes. Um, during the final walkthrough, it was noted that the sidewalk required for the common lot, which is that clubhouse on the north, um, west side. Um, was a part of phase, I think like the common lot was done with like phase two and then the road needed to be done. So they waited to do the sidewalk and then the sidewalk didn't get done with phase three. So we made sure to come back and let them know that this sidewalk for the common lot needed to be completed with this final phase. And I can say that that sidewalk has been completed with this phase. Um, we did a final site inspection on September eighth and all parts of those items at this time have been completed and it has passed final inspection. Um, like I said before, covenants have been approved, um, we're just waiting for the hard copy, we're reading for hard copy of most of our documents anyway. Um, just to get them all at the same time. Um, the bonds, we've got streets, drainage, water and sewer bond amounts and they have been approved. Um, below is the bond amounts for you guys to review, um, in your packet. The property is not located in or adjacent to a floodplain and no wetlands have been found on the site. Uh, as stated before, drainage for phase three was handled by the existing dry detention bond constructed with Tuscany Phase One. Two and three, it was updated, um, the drainage report at this time is under staff review. Um, it's just contingent on getting that updated for final. Um, for street improvements, Townview is labeled as a major arterial, uh, due to the location of the existing wall on the north side of Townview. The right-of-way requirement is thirty-five feet and the additional can be made up on the south side when development occurs. All street improvements were completed with previous phases in this phase, um, just added streetlights and utility easements. Um, no landscaping or street cheese were proposed along Townview as there were no room, there wasn't. Room at the time for street trees due to the existing wall and the utilities. Um. Questions?
I got a quick question, with creating the lots, what are they gonna do for sewer?
This has already been approved.
Okay, so it's like grandfathered in because of this period?
You've had A D H approval since they got.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess she.
Yeah. I think this was like one of the last things. Cause this started, yeah, cause this was a.
Been a while.
Literally September of last year is when it started. So we finalized about a year later and that was like one of the last ones, I think that got A D H approval.
I know somebody that'll be happy this is done, right? Uh, any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners? If not, then I would entertain a motion for twenty-four zero three, Tuscany Phase Four Final Platte Warranty Bonds and Covenants.
It's John, I'm going to approve subdivision twenty-four zero three final plot, warranty bonds and covenants.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there anyone that's opposed? A dirt bike track. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
There goes the dirt bike track.
All right, um, under announcements, there is a council meeting that's on eleven, uh, ten. Our next planning meeting is the eighteenth, if you can't be here, please let us know. Anything else from staff? That's good. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second, is anyone opposed? Thank you, guys.
I got a new track now.